We can hear you.
All right, thanks.
Did you have a good birthday?
Oh, yeah, it was great. Yeah.
Good.
I, uh, the highlight of the day was I spoke at a graduation ceremony from a homeschool group here in Stallings and Matthews.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
That's fun.
So that was fun. So first time I've ever been invited to do that. So it was fun.
Awesome.
I saw that picture. You got a nice patio there with a big screen outside.
I do. I don't think a lot of people got what my caption was. It was a reference to George Strait.
Oh, yeah.
That's why, that's why there was the picture of the TV. I was trying to get George Strait and Jason in the same shot.
All right. Well, how's the, uh, is the TV on Wi-Fi?
Yes.
Yeah. And how's the clarity of the picture?
It was great. Mm-hmm, it's great. And then what it does is it pushes back up when we're not using it. So it doesn't stay down all the time.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
You can come over here and see it.
Well, I got a, I got a TV in every house. I might as well put one on my patio.
You should. I like, I like TV. All he does is grill chicken and listen to music. That's all he does.
Yeah. All right, we got Brad, Heather, John, Stephen, and I saw Linda. Yeah, Linda's on vacation, but she's, uh, not gonna be using her, uh, video.
I'm here.
Yeah, I see you, David. There you go.
Live from New York City.
Is that right?
Yep.
Where about?
Upper East Side, not too far from the Metropolitan Museum of Art.
All righty.
Got a newborn grandson this week.
Oh, is that what you're up there for?
Yeah.
All right, born today?
No, five days ago.
All right, everybody okay?
Everybody's doing great. Lot of fun. Just got done feeding him.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Is that your first?
Uh, this one, Thomas here, is number two.
Two.
Henry's the first one, right?
Yep, Henry's the first one, and he's, uh, he's already stoned, so he fell asleep early tonight.
Well, nothing like grandkids, no doubt about it.
I had no idea until they happened, they'd do this much fun, but they are.
Yeah, my two are up from Atlanta, and then, uh, Tyler's, his wife is due in December, so my third one, so looking forward to that. All righty, it's seven o'clock, and I think we got everybody. Alex, oh, there you are. Brad, Mac and Melanie, okay, I believe we got everybody. So thank y'all for, uh, being on tonight. So Heather's gonna do our invocation. So take it away, Heather.
Everybody ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
All right. Heavenly Father, we thank you, um, for this beautiful day today. We thank you for all of our many blessings, including the opportunity for us to meet. Please continue to bless us and guide us to make the best decisions that we can for the town. This is in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. All righty. Alex, you knew how to do the flag? Aaron's on vacation, so Alex is doing double duty.
Yes, sir, I do. Pull it up right here. All right.
Oh, there you go. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty. Thank you, Alex. All righty, I'll call the meeting to order. So, uh, first up is our public comments. Is there anybody that would, uh, like to speak, uh, three minutes and state your address, please?
Yes. David Allison, 2017, Horizon Court, Matthews 28104.
All righty, David, what's on your mind?
I, uh, wanted to talk about, uh, this hellish intersection up here, Potter Road and Pleasant Plains. I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor the point. Everybody knows it's a safety hazard. Everybody knows it looks terrible, and everybody knows it affects the quality of life. And I, I just got fed up with people complaining and, of course, the delays, and I started a website, fixpotterroad.com. I bought a sign, I bought a website, then the webmaster had me, uh, pay for some drone photography. So all this is out of my own pocket, because I want to put my money where my mouth is. And I also am foolish enough to believe that each person can make a difference. One person can change things. And I have 400 people signed up to my website. It just, uh, broke out on social media, and it's exploding. And I'm coming to you tonight to ask direction, because I know the Stallings Town Council has been diligent and done everything they can to, to help us. So who can I take these names to? Is it the state legislative delegation? Is it the Board of County Commissioners? I, I'm at a loss, but more than anything, I'm as, I share your frustration. I'm sure you're frustrated too. And I'm not here to rehash the past or detail what's wrong with the intersection. We all know what's wrong with it. And I just want to know what I, with 400 people behind me, and probably 500 by now, it grows, uh, every day. What can I do? What can the citizens do? So that's, that's my statement.
All right, well, David, appreciate it. Usually we don't respond, but I'll go ahead and respond. You know, I, I went on your website and wrote a response back, and I don't know if you saw it or not.
Yes, I, yes, and I appreciate that.
And so you hit the nail on the head. The thing to do is, uh, contact, send your, send your names to the county commissioners and your, uh, North Carolina legislators. Let them, those are the two people that make the decisions on money. They have a lot more money than we do.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am. Linda Paxton's the, uh, David, Linda Pax is on the council, and she's the Carto Vice Chair, so she knows a lot about, uh, transportation issues.
Well, I was gonna, um, say this during my report tonight, but since we have this as a public comment, I will say that the Carto Board will be hearing a request, which we do expect to be approved, uh, for, uh, some discretionary funding in the amount of $2,197,600. And, um, if that is approved at our meeting on Wednesday night, we'll allow the town to proceed quickly to, um, well, we have the right of way, so to, uh, move to construction on that, um, intersection there. So there is good news coming, hopefully.
Well, that is good news. Thank you very much. And I just want to add, without being snarky, uh, the credit, the, the dates have no credibility anymore. When we hear October, which I know you're being sincere and repeating what you said, but I just, I just hope it's now. I want it done now. I hope you hear me.
All righty, well, David, thanks for your comments, and, uh, you're right, uh, we, we've been working on this a long time, so appreciate your comments. All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is anybody else in the public wish to speak? All righty, that, that's it.
What did she say? I remember?
No, I said that.
I know, but when did she say?
She said, she did.
Okay. If you're not, if you're not speaking, if you could, uh, turn your mute button on, that would be helpful.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, I'll close the public comment period, and then, uh, now we're up to the consent agenda that, uh, has the minutes from, uh, 4/12/21, our special meeting, our regular meeting on 4/12/21, a closed session on 4/12/21, and then a special meeting on 4/19/21. Uh, does anybody have any changes to these minutes? If not, can I get a motion, please?
I'll motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Groom, second by Mr. Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it, so the, uh, those minutes are approved. Next up is our reports, uh, from the mayor. I don't have anything, so, uh, well, I'll let Linda, Linda, you gonna talk about going to the, uh, to the, uh, county commissioners?
I was not planning to, so you go ahead.
No, well, you go ahead. You were the one that did most speaking. I just introduced you. So, like I said, you, you know more about transportation than, uh, me. So I'll let, uh, leave that for, uh, Linda to do it. We'll, uh, go to a report from council members. So, uh, John, do you have anything?
Not this week, thank you.
All right, David?
Uh, nothing for me, thanks.
All right, and then Linda?
Okay, well, I'll start with the, uh, county commissioners meeting. Mayor Dunn and I did attend the meeting on, on, last Monday, June the 7th, and, um, we spoke at a public comment to ask the Board of Commissioners to please consider, uh, putting the quarter cent sales tax on the, um, ballot for referendum this fall. Um, they did not make any comments, so I don't know how well that was received, but we did, um, present some information about the economic benefits of the, um, blue line, which was, um, I'm trying to remember the year now, didn't bring those, um, notes with me, but, um, when the blue line, they've tracked the economic benefits of that blue line out to Pambol, and at this point in time, it has generated over $3 billion in, um, private real estate investment there. And, um, of course, the extension out to the university that just opened in 2018 already has over $1 billion in new, um, investment there. So our request, of course, was also, um, giving them information about the current locally preferred alternative, which was adopted in April by the MTC, which does include, um, stations for the silver line, one in Stallings and one in Indian Trail. So it is important to us, of course, to get some financial, um, backing. Uh, I don't think Mecklenburg County will build this rail line for us without some participation financially from the county. So, um, I think Mayor Dunn has already followed up with an email to the commissioners, and I plan to do that as well, to just reiterate the points we made at the meeting and to, um, ask them again to please allow the voters to have a say in this. So that's one thing I wanted to report. The other, um, thing I wanted to make the council aware of, it really has not affected us as a town a whole lot, but it does have big impact for the county as a whole. And over the past nine months, um, I've worked with a task force looking at transit, um, funding for Union County, and there is a pool of money, it's federal money called 5307, that funds, um, transportation for, mainly for social services, people to doctor's appointments, um, dialysis, those kinds of things. And Union County in the past was getting $343,705 a year from that pool of money, but when COVID hit, um, some of their funding went away. And we've realized in looking at this pretty deeply over the past nine months, that Union County was not reporting their, um, trips correctly. They were reporting most things as rural, and whether, even if it started in a rural area and went into an urban area, it could have been counted as urban, but they were not re, reporting it that way. So the formula that was in place at the time was kind of penalizing the smaller agencies. Task force will be making a presentation to the board and asking them to consider adopting a new formula. And in the process, we've looked at formulas from nine different, um, MPOs comparable to ours, and the new formula, uh, that we will be recommending be adopted will give Union County $969,000, so almost triple the amount of money that they've been receiving, uh, for transit in the county. So that's good news, um, for the county. And it, it is a pool of money total that's about $20 million each year. And that's my report.
All right, thank you, Linda. Yeah, I did hear from, uh, I sent an email to the county commissioners, just following up on our meeting on the, uh, quarter cent sales tax. I heard, I talked to Stony, uh, in person. His reason for voting against it was, uh, the, the cost that the small businessmen would have to endure to recalculate their cash registers. Uh, that was his, that was his reasoning. And, uh, so, uh, and then, uh, David Williams responded, and he just, uh, thought that $120 million or more per mile was just way too much money and yet to expect Union County to have to, to pay for half of that. So I don't know where he got his numbers from, but, uh, you know, you know, it's up to us to provide them the information so they can make an intelligent decision. So I thought both of those, uh, comments were short sighted, uh, based on the numbers that, uh, that Charlotte is showing on economic development with the, uh, the blue line. So, uh, don't hold your breath with the county commissioners, you know, just be point blank. You know, all of them, most of, I don't know where David Williams lives, but the rest of them live in Eastern, uh, Union County. So, uh, they don't feel like E- Eastern Union County is probably gonna use a, uh, a rail line to get into Charlotte. Uh, that's my, you know, nobody said it, but that's my opinion. And so, uh, until we get people on the county commissioners from Western Union County, I don't think this will ever happen. So we might miss the boat on this. I don't know. So that's where we stand right now. So, but thank you, Linda. All righty, uh, next up, uh, District Four, Heather.
No report.
All right, Stephen? All right, Stephen?
Sorry, no report. And I was not able to go to the Wuma meetings past week just because I was caught up at work.
Alrighty, well, that comes first. All right, Brad?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
All right, thank y'all. All right, Alex, report from town manager? Alex, you're on mute. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. A couple of quick things to mention. The town executed the contract documents to close on the parcels related to 325 Stallings Road, which is beside the new town hall. So that's been completed. Thank you again to Mayor Proton Paxton, who served as our realtor without charge to us. And everybody for patience as we work through that process. Hospital tour, if anyone is interested, the hospital is offered, given us several dates to take council members through the facility. Ms. Nichols sent out a doodle poll, so if you're interested, please look at those dates and let us know if any work for you. And finally, I wanted to follow up with some information on the ARA, AKA the American Rescue Plan. I've, a task air and was serving as our expert for the town on the American Rescue Plan. Although she's gone on much deserved vacation, we are, I still felt it important to provide an update because I know with the amount of money at stake, questions I'm sure the board does too, and I think it'd be helpful to what we don't know and what we do know, given the amount of money that's at issue. So I'm just gonna read through this. Can everybody see the American Rescue Plan document update?
I can see part of it.
Yeah, okay, good. I'll scroll down as we go.
Could see the headline.
Can you see just the headline, Mr. Shoal, or?
Oh, there's a whole lot of stuff there, but I'm not gonna split that hard. You sent it out. I have it here.
Okay, okay. So basically, what staff did is we reached out to the North Carolina League of Municipalities and asked them to answer several of our questions. And it turns out that we're asking a lot of the same questions that pretty much everybody else is asking. And a lot of those answers right now are unknown. But let's start with what we do know. What we do know is that we are slated to receive up to $4.72 million due to the American Rescue Plan. And we're what's deemed a non-entitled municipality. So that means we're gonna receive our allotment from the feds through the state. So the state received the funds in late May, and they have 30 days to distribute to the municipalities. So the state can request a 30-day extension, which is a very likely scenario. They're working out details. So we do anticipate we should receive the funds by the end of July at the latest. We've done what we need to do to, to receive the funds. We've set it up, a separate revenue account. Ms. Gross has done a really good job in helping and working to get that all set up. All the funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, by 2026. We're gonna, and we would be required to submit an annual report on all the expenditures. And at that time, there's not a lot of forms or helpful information that's out there. So I'd say the challenging part is that even though the amount of money is so great, the restrictions on the money are very, very tight. The uses that we can use the money for are reportedly limited based on what we know. And I will say the final rules are not out yet. So a lot of the details we just but what we do know are the general four categories that the uses are limited. The first is to support public health response to COVID. The second is to provide premium pay to essential workers. The third is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure projects. And the fourth is to replace public sector loss. Funds may not be used for pension funds, rainy day funds, legal settlements, or federal match requirements. The league also reminded us that the guidance provided specifically excludes transportation infrastructure. So if a municipality wishes to use funds for another purpose that is specific, we must identify the harmful effect of the COVID-19 activity and how the project assess the causal compounding connection to COVID-19, assess for disproportionate impact on the stress sections or populations, and also determine how to prove the expense produces the expected. So the league is very wary of a municipality using the funds for this another purpose other than the first four categories right now. The reporting criteria just right now is unknown, and there is no preapproval process at this stage. So if a municipality were to spend the funds on a project, then it ultimately would not be approved. The municipality would be responsible for potentially paying back those funds. So there's a caveat in that guidance to allow for using the funds for one of the allowable expenses under the for example, Stallings could not use all of its funds, but Union County could for a project that would benefit Stallings. Stallings could transfer funds to Union County specifically for an outline purpose. Overall, the league's guidance, especially for a municipality like Stallings, where the uses of the funds are not obvious, because we don't have a public health department, for example. We don't operate a water and sewer broadband utility. Is to hold the funds and not spend hastily in order to first formulate a plan on how to best use the funds. Second, observe others' projects and what has noticeably improved as far as uses ago. And third, will be used to open up other uses for the funds from municipalities. The league would, would help us and help us provide, provide us with more information as time goes back. So I imagine there are a lot of questions that you might be wondering in your head right now. I still have some, as I'm sure everyone, all of the municipalities do. But we don't have a lot of those answers out there. There's still a lot of unanswered questions. The final rules are done. But just some observations from my perspective. You know, the amount of money, again, is so great, the eligible expenses are so limited. This is a completely new experience for everyone, and yet there's no preapproval process in the deadline for spending those funds is the end of 2024, which is going to come up very quickly. Those combinations of factors concern me. If those factors stand, I suspect we're likely to see in the future local governments having to pay back millions for expenditures that those jurisdictions in good faith believed was eligible to be spent. But it turns out those expenditures were ineligible. And so we need to be very careful to make sure we're protecting the town to make sure we're not one of those jurisdictions.
Alrighty. Anybody have any questions, Alex, on the ARA?
Okay. And Mayor, I was, I was going to bring up the the issue of the downtown streetscape, ask a couple of questions for direction, but I gotta ask a couple of really good questions about council members in my one-on-one. And I think I want to kind of do some research on a couple more items before I bring it back to the board. So I'm gonna hold off on that right now, but would like permission to bring that back to the board. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Alex.
I gotta ask one question.
Yeah, what you got?
Does this mean that, I mean, it would be legal for us to potentially transfer this money to the county for the sewer expansion for us? That's the way I read it?
Potentially. My understanding is that we could transfer the funds from, from us to another local government entity as long as the receiving entity is using the funds for one of the allowable expenses, the ARP, so.
And if they didn't? Sorry.
If they didn't. That's a good question. I would, I would think, Mr. Ayers, that we would ultimately be the ones responsible.
Wow, okay.
Steve, I've thought about that as well, but one concern I had is that, you know, right now we're inadvertently getting an 18-month to seven-year essentially a moratorium on development while the county gets this act together with sewage. So what's in it for us to speed up that, that process? So the community's already asking for us to slow things down.
Oh, yeah. I was thinking more along the lines of, I mean, if we were, with all the restrictions, whether or not we would lose that money, maybe at least, you know, we could go back into our community and it wouldn't get lost and we'd have to give it back. You know what I mean? That was kind of my mentality.
Sure, sure.
All right, thank you, Alex. Chief Franks, you got anything for us?
Sir, nothing to report tonight.
All right, that's always good news. It's all quiet. And any other town departments have anything other than if something is on the agenda? Alex, anybody else that you know?
No, sir. That concludes the town staff. Thank you.
All right, thank y'all. All right, next up is the agenda approval. And the only thing I have is we have one citizen, Jill Reed, that's on the number 10, 940 historical markers. And rather than having her hang around till 940, I'd like to move that up to 3A be the next thing after our agenda approval.
Good idea.
And does anybody else have any additions or anything changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the following change. Move item number 10, historical markers, to the number 3A, so Ms. Reed can go earlier.
There we go. All right, motion by Mr. Richardson, second.
Second.
By David Shoal, all in favors, PCI? So Karen Williams can go home early, too. Alrighty, Jill and Karen, I'll turn it over to y'all. We can get y'all's presentation up on the screen here.
Okay.
Hold up right now.
All right.
Thank you.
Can you see that?
All right, perfect.
Okay. Well, just to give you a little bit of background. But prior to COVID, we had talked about a variety of different things, and one of those were historical markers. And I think we heard a little bit about them at some point in the past because they were in this year's budget. Historical markers will help raise awareness of our town history, and they'll also help to enhance our identity. If you're seeing Stallings historical markers throughout town, similar to how you're doing the road signs. North Carolina does have a historical marker program, but it doesn't apply to matters of local significance only. So we can't go through the state and have a state come out and put a marker in for us, but we can do it on our own. The state suggests several different vendors. We looked at a lot of different vendors, and we actually recommend that the town go with Seawest Studios. It's actually the same vendor that does the North Carolina markers. These are a little bit of, different North Carolina styles that are out there. We could use the same style, but we can't use the same colors. Or we can choose a different style that's similar, and we can still use the same silver background and black lettering to give a similar look and feel so that people, I think if you're driving down the road, you identify that color scheme with a historical marker. Two different styles that we looked at were the Georgia style and the Ohio style, because they both have the opportunity to have an emblem at the top. And again, picture these in the same coloring, color scheme. Similar prices, the Georgia's slightly more, it's got a little bit more of a curve to it. But the prices include the same information on both sides, so it can be read either direction. It actually has, comes with the post, and also includes shipping, which the shipping, I'm sure, is probably a good, not a good chunk, but not super cheap because they're somewhat heavy. The locations that we had talked about was initially having one on each end of the town. So on the south side by Berry Plastics, and on the north side by the Divide. And let me pull up a little bit of info of what we envisioned seeing there. On the south side, we had talked about Berry Plastics, A, to draw your eye away from the silos, but also because it's close to the railroad tracks, which is kind of the heart of where the town kind of grew up. And you can see the wording that we wanted to place there, but just a little bit of background. The other location would be more to commemorate the Blair Mill, which later became known as Stevens Mill. And we envision that close to the Divide because it's a bright, open area. And if there were no trees, you could actually see where the old home site existed. It's just across the little bridge there that's close to the Divide. Now, these locations, Berry Plastics and the Divide, have graciously given permission for the town to install on their property, which is great. I did have, Ms. Councilman Richardson had asked earlier this week if they're set in stone. Not necessarily. Our goal in coming up with some sites was to, looking ahead to the future, having the additional markers installed in various other places. And we just kind of wanted to space them out. Close to the town hall, we envision at a future point, maybe something about the old town hall. Another one perhaps by the park that talks a little bit about how Family Night in the Park, which later became known as Stallings Fest. So and then there's gold mines and an old school that's over on the north side. So there's other markers that we could envision in the future, and we just didn't want to have a whole bunch running up on each other. Let's see. NCDOT owns the right of way, and they won't permit markers within the right, within their right of way. So that's why the town reached out to both Berry Plastics and the Divide. Now, there's a couple of different ways you could go about installing it. We could go with an easement, which would ensure permanent placement with future property owners. However, an easement encourages additional cost. About 400 for, for a survey, another 1,500, I'm sorry, 1,500 for a survey, about 400 for the preparation of an easement, and then if the property owners wanted anything for the easement itself. Without an easement, the costs are obviously lower, timeline is streamlined. And if we needed to relocate it in the future, we certainly could. Typically, I would think a historical marker property would be kind of a nice thing to have for a property owner, but there's some considerations for you. We envision when these markers are installed that we would have some positive PR for the town, doing some press releases, giving out a little bit more of the history and bringing some awareness to it. And also an event for the town, even if it's small, but, you know, invite some of the descendants of the Stallings family or some descendants of the Stevens or Blair family, and invite anybody in the town who wants to come out to see them unveiled, I guess, not necessarily installed. Typically, the unveiling ceremonies that the state does, you know, they cover it with a black blanket or something, and then pour a drape and pull it off, and have a program that talks about the significance of the history in that area. Tonight, we just need authorization for the town to proceed with ordering and installation of the two markers without easements or authorization to begin the easement process before proceeding with ordering. Also, we want you to take a look at the content and let us know if there's any changes you'd like to see to that and the styles. If, you know, council has a certain preference towards the Georgia style or the Ohio style, if you want to keep with the silver and the black lettering. The, we also had talked about having the town seal instead of the town logo as the emblem at the top, simply because if it's gonna be there from now to who knows when, a seal typically has a little bit more permanence than a logo, and a logo may change. Plus, Aaron had sent over some different copies of the seal, and there's some black and white, which would Plus Erin had sent over some different copies of the seal and there's some black and white, which would go well with the silver and black versus the very colorful logo that the town uses like on the street times. And then also just looking ahead, start planning for additional markers to be added annually or semi annual or. Or every couple of years, whatever works with for the town. And then depending on location, when you're working on your small area plans, development agreements, things like that, if there's opportunity. To carve out a spot for a future marker, that might be something that would be helpful, so you know, you don't have to come back and do an easement at a later date. I know I was at a meeting, I think a couple of months ago, where they talked about a potential development at Stevens Mill and Stallings Road area with like a park alongside the street. That would probably be an ideal place to put a marker about the Sustar School, which was one of the original schools in our area. Or the gold mines, because there were some gold mines in that area, so. And you know, if the town had that park, then that would obviously be an easy installation in terms of guaranteeing the location. And that's about all I have unless Karen has anything to add.
All right.
But thank you, Jill. I don't, but thank you, Jill, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank y'all. Jill, can you go back to the, the one that had the, 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 the Georgia sign and the Ohio sign and the cost?
Yep, hold on a second here. There you go.
There we go, thank you. So if we picked any four of those designs, we could do the silver and black?
Well, actually, it's just two designs, it's just two different pictures of the same. These are both the Georgia design and these are both the Ohio design.
But if you pick, you can have the silver and black, if you pick one of them.
Yes, we can have the silver background and the black lettering on these. We can't have the North Carolina design and we could certainly use the North Carolina design and use a different color scheme. You know, the brown with like the gold lettering or something like that, but I think people identify the silver and the black as a historical marker in North Carolina, so it might be easily recognized.
Well, obviously the Ohio sign is. You know, cheaper, looks like. Yeah, and let's see, is it, is it the same size thirty by forty-two versus, so it's smaller sign? So.
Harder to read.
What's that?
It would be harder to read.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, the Georgia sign has kind of the swoop up at the top. Which is a little bit more similar. I mean, it has a less, the Ohio has a little less of that swoop at the top.
Is it? Is there any interest in putting the town of Stallings name on these a little more prominent than the logo or the seal?
Um, yes, certainly, like.
Well, similar to that first Georgia one. Town of Meridian Hills. And then I think the, the, the historical part was that neighborhood. Wellington, Wellington neighborhood, I guess.
We could certainly do that, although if we have. My, my own personal opinion might be to have like the, where it says Wellington neighborhood, have that as Stallings, North Carolina. And have the name of the marker because people are going to want to know what the marker is, you know, as to whether or not they want to slow down and read it. And if it just says Stallings and they all say Stallings throughout the town, they might not, it might not catch the eye as easily if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, that's fine. I just that. The state doesn't need to put the state markers on it because they're the states, but we are spending money out of our, our town budget. I think we at least want to help brand the town a little bit, put our name, town name somewhere on it. Now, I like your idea to stick it, stick as long as it's up there.
Yeah, and this one, it's already there because of what it is. But on the Blair Mill and Stevens Mill, we would need to add Stallings and C on there. I think that's a very good point.
Thank you.
All right, so we're. Not looking, for two signs, we're not looking at a lot of money, so any comments from any other council member?
Sir, if I can. The one Georgia sign looks. Like the logo is three dimensional on that second sign.
Does.
So. I mean, obviously, obviously that one there looks nicer to me, but I'm sure that that's. Seems like it's more expensive because it's looks like maybe even the second and third writing is three dimensional. So. What type were you actually?
I would have to get further clarification. This is the quote that they had given to us and I'm not sure. I'll have to go back and ask them if that's like a laser. I think this top one looks more like a laser type emblem. And this one does definitely look raised, so.
Okay, I mean, that was just a question. I mean, obviously the one below it looks a little bit more professional if it's for the same price.
Yeah, the one with the, one with the pioneer turpentine, yeah, that does look nice.
And I can reach out to them and find out which, which style emblem comes with the pricing that they gave us.
So we're looking at forty-five hundred and sixty-five dollars for two signs, it looks like.
How much was already in the budget for this?
I believe six thousand, is that correct, Karen?
I remember that, that's right, six thousand, and also.
That's right.
Money for perhaps.
Yep.
So it's already in the budget for this, this year.
Yeah. So if we can get a consensus on which one design, we want Jill and Karen to reach back out to the, the company. What was the name of the company again, Jill? Suah.
S U W A H.
So if we can get a consensus on which type of sign we would like for them to. Go back to and the money's in, the money's in the budget, so. Anybody have a. A motion?
Do we need a motion or just a consensus?
Just a consensus.
Real quick.
Yes.
Mayor, this is Melanie Cox, can I make a comment?
Yeah, hey Melanie, yes ma'am.
Um, I, I think it's fine if the property owner is allowing the sign to be placed on their property without an easement. But I just wanted to make sure everyone understood the risk that if the property changes hands and the new property owner says, you know, I don't want this in my property, they can. Take it out at any time and there's nothing the town could do about it, whereas if we had an. An easement, it would be more protection for the town, so I just want to make sure everyone was aware about that.
All right, Melanie, thank you, and I think it's worth the risk. I don't think Berry Plastics is going anywhere and the Divide doesn't want that bad publicity, so I'm willing to take that risk, but that's up to the council.
I concur. I can, I think I'd like to see the Georgia one with no easement.
The, the lower, lower one with the raised emblem?
Yeah, preferably that one.
Right, what's the consensus of the council then?
Bottom left.
That's two.
Same.
Three.
Agree.
Four, five, all right.
So Mayor, the only, the only comment Jill, Jill alluded to it earlier, I spoke with her, traded notes with her earlier in the week about location. And I think it's helpful, she, she did a really good job of explaining, we've got more coming down the road and Heather and I sit on this committee with her that we, we've only sat for a little bit because of the. Suspension of activity. My only question about these, particularly the location of the first one. Being our town namesake, Mr. Stallings being, yeah, that one there, thank you, Jill. Located at Berry Plastics, I'm concerned about the location there, it doesn't feel Berry Stallings like, plus it's a big silo, as she alluded, so. And I get the logic of putting it there to, to take your eye off the silos, but often wonder if it'll get lost in the scale, so. I'll approve the motion, I'll even make the motion, I support these, I would like maybe have a little bit of time to think through where that first sign would go. So I think while it's being ordered and produced, we could do that.
All righty, well, that makes sense. I mean, we got time, what's the lead time, Jill? Did they say what the lead time was?
You know, it's been a long time since we got all of this information and I don't have that in my notes in front of me, but I will certainly follow up on that.
Well, I appreciate that, but I can guarantee you they're in the same boat as every other manufacturer in, in the world that they're having a hard time getting supplies. So it might be, you know, more, more than a week or two. So. Brad, did you want to go ahead and make the motion? I know we had a consensus, but.
Sure, I'll make the motion to, I don't have the agenda in front of me, guys, could you put it back up or, let me. Prove the motion of the historic committee to, here we go, authorize the town to proceed with the ordering installation of. Two markers without easements. I would like to add subject to consideration of, of alternate location for the first sign if possible.
All righty, motion by Brad to authorize the town to proceed with ordering and installation of the initial two markers without easements and. With possible review of the placement of the first sign. So can I get a second?
Second.
Second by David Shaw, any further discussion? All right, I think we'll do this, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it, so thank you, Jill, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
When y'all have some more information, just let us know and then we'll review the, where we're going to put the sign.
Ms. Cox, would we need a roll call vote there since we're virtual or are you comfortable with the way that proceeded?
Send us the expenditure of town funds for something like this, I think we should do a roll call.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Sorry.
Yeah, all right, Alex, can you, can you, we have a motion in a second, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure. First time I've ever done it, so if I mess it up, please correct me, but how do you vote?
Aye.
District two, how do you vote?
Aye.
District three, how do you vote?
Aye.
District four, how do you vote?
Aye.
District five, how do you vote?
Aye.
District six, how do you vote? All right, the ayes carry it.
All right, thank you, Jill, thank you, Karen. All right, next up is number four, the text amendment twenty-one dot oh six dot oh one and general statute one sixty D. So Lynn, I'll turn it over to Lynn and Lynn, I told Alex, I said, you only got ten minutes on the agenda item here, so I look forward to, you're wrapping it up in ten minutes, I'll open the public hearing.
I will do my best.
All right.
Staff, we are here this evening tonight to discuss with council some amendments that were made to our development ordinance. That were a requirement that came about per North Carolina, North Carolina general statute one sixty D. In July of two thousand nineteen, the governor signed into law the new chapter one sixty D of North Carolina general statutes. One sixty D is the first major recodification and modernization of both the municipal and county development regulations since nineteen oh five. The drafting and legislative considerations of various versions of the final product took over five years. The result is a single reorganized chapter of the general statute. It consolidates the municipal land use regulations that were previously chapter one sixty A. And the county land use regulations that were formerly chapter one fifty-three A into one chapter. So basically, there used to be two separate regulations, one that addressed county land use and one that addressed municipal. And this one sixty A is bringing those documents into one chapter. As a result of the adoption of one sixty D, basically every jurisdiction in the state of North Carolina has had to update their ordinances. To reflect the changes that were made through the one sixty D, chapter one sixty D. But I do want to know that there's nothing about the enactment of this chapter that repeals any prior local acts or makes any previously issued permits or development approvals invalid. I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. On the process that we undertook is town staff and legal counsel, specifically Matt McCarley, who's here this evening. We worked together on reviewing our current ordinances, we went article by article. We made conforming changes as necessary to comply with chapter one sixty D. On the task we undertook was basically to review our ordinance, to revise it, to edit it, to delete it and add provisions as necessary. So significant changes to the ordinance, the major ones really is that we did have to go through. And in our current development ordinance, there's lots of references to one sixty A. We had to make sure that those things were changed and that the ordinance was brought up to current standards of one sixty D statutes. There was also two general session laws that were adopted in twenty nineteen that addressed land use law as well, we had to make sure those changes were included. We just spent a lot of time updating terminology, definitions in the ordinance, some of those had to be updated, so we had to make sure that occurred. We also took advantage of newer improved procedures or authorities authorized by chapter one sixty D. There's a lot of things that the current ordinance, basically they, they put it in, they codified it. Specifically surrounding conditional zoning, but I have to say, we've been using conditional zoning for a long time at the town of Stallings. And a lot of the things, they were already implemented and written into our current ordinance. Their current, we also found some current minor errors and typos in the ordinance, so we took the opportunity to, to basically make those small revisions and just clean things up. We also did a text amendment in May surrounding our new open space article. And we wanted to make sure those changes were reflected as well. And then we also revised article seventeen, there were some legislation, there was a Supreme Court decision. Specifically Reed versus Gilbert that talked about sign content. So we had to make sure we were in compliance with that Supreme Court decision, so there were some changes made to article seventeen. But the majority of the, all of the changes are really things that were required to make by these new statutes. And we just wanted to point out that these are some of the significant things. So what are our next steps? The planning board did review this on June the eighth. Since this is a text amendment, it is a public hearing, it had to go before the planning board. They reviewed it, they did recommend approval. This evening, we are holding the public hearing. And after this, it will come back to you for a vote on June the twenty-eighth, since this is a virtual meeting. And at that time, we will adopt the statement of reasonable, reasonableness and consistency. There's a lot of information we included in your packet, the actual text with all of the documented changes are there. It is a lot of information, we also put together and provided you with a spreadsheet. And the staff put together that reflects the articles that were changed, what, in reference what the changes in those chapters were. And there's also a spreadsheet that the school of government put together that was very helpful in making these ordinances amendments that basically showed. What the required amendments are, so that was included for your use as well. So that's the end of our presentation, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, Mr. McCarley's on the call as well and can address any legal questions you may have.
All right, Lynn, thank you, Mac, thank you, so before we, does anybody, before we do that, I'll open it up to the public, are there any comments from the public? All right, hearing none, any questions for Lynn or Mac? Thank y'all for your work on this.
Yeah, I, I've just got three, three things to that to me, if I may, I don't know if they're questions, just comments, and maybe Mac can comment or Lynn, but. I saw a lot of changes to conflicts of interest, I don't know if they got stricter or more defined, so I want to just hear Mac's interpretation of, did, did something change with regard to conflicts of interest? Manufactured homes, do we allow them in our town before, can we now? And there's something about an age limit, you can't prohibit old manufactured homes. And then finally, conditional zoning, look like the wording changed to something else, is that material or just a word change to special something zoning? Those are the three things I picked.
All right, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll take them in order, the conflicts of interest provisions. Those basically put into the statute what the case law has ruled over the last ten, fifteen years. So it's codification of existing law and put into the statutes just because that's the place that most people would look for it, but I don't think it's actually a change. They did clean up a little bit of the language from some of the case law, just to make it simpler and easier to understand. But it's not a major change. The mobile home issue is a change, the mobile home industry lobbied hard and got the legislature to. Outlaw the prohibition of mobile homes based on age. A lot of communities had regulations that basically said anything before July of nineteen seventy-six was too old and couldn't be used. And that corresponds with some national standards that were developed for mobile homes that are larger, safer. More attractive in appearance. And they have, the legislature has picked the side of the mobile home industry and said you can't outlaw those based on age anymore. We've made those, we've made those changes in the U D O. And the last one, the conditional zoning. This one again is simply codifying some changes brought about by case law and clarifying some of the language so that it's easier to understand, but not a, not a, not a policy change.
Okay, thank you.
And Brad, if I could make one comment on the manufactured homes question that you had. We also, one of the things we did have to do, we did not have a zoning district per se in our ordinance that allowed for, for mobile home parks. So we have one area where they do exist. I believe it's called Independence Village across from Stallings Elementary School. So we did create a zoning district for mobile homes in that neighborhood so that we would be in compliance as well.
And Lynn, repeat that, where, now where's, where's the district now?
Well, it, we didn't, we added, it will have to make a map amendment to you and we'll be bringing that back to you as well, but we had to add it to the ordinance. And it's across from Stallings Elementary School. It's an existing neighborhood. It's not technically a mobile home park. It's more of a mobile home subdivision actually. But we did have to create a zoning district to allow for that in that area.
Isn't that Brook?
I believe it's called Independence Village, if I'm not mistaken. It's off of Stallings Road.
Right.
I may have never noticed it.
Gotcha. All right, thank you Brad, thank you Lynn. Any other questions for Brad and Mac, I mean Lynn and Mac? Well, as, as we've all seen and kudos to Brad for getting into it. And I've read portions of it, but it's a lot of, lot of detail, so do the best you can and try to get it so we can be prepared to vote on it on June twenty, twenty eighth. So, any other questions? All right, if not, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you Lynn, thank you Mac.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll do number five, the FY twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two proposed budget. And I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. I prepared a very brief presentation just to kind of summarize where we're at with the budget. Just very high level. We, we made the changes based on the council meeting back on June eight. All right, can everybody see the, the big PowerPoint? It's loaded up, big screen, okay.
Got it.
So, one of the things that, based on my observations, was probably the topic of the most conversation. Tax rate, there's been a, North Carolina law requires each county to complete a property reevaluate once every eight years. Indian County, they had to do it a little bit sooner. Growth by law and so the, the primary purpose of this is to ensure assessments reflect market reevaluation and taxation is fair and equitable to all citizens. So that was completed and we calculated the revenue neutral tax rate at about sixteen point six cents. That's based on the statutory calculation. The proposed budget tax rate was, was three cents higher than that at nineteen point. And on June the eighth, the council ultimately decided to eighteen point six, generated about five hundred thousand dollars. Each penny's just a little bit over two hundred and fifty thousand. So at the meeting, the rationales that were expressed by the council members was included, that the revenue neutral tax rate might not produce the same revenue given the county's sales tax distribution method. And the ongoing property valuation appeals, right? We don't know how that's going to end up. And the county's valuation method is based on total tax levy. So if you've got the highest tax levy, then you would have the highest sales tax distribution. And that's how Waxall has a higher sales tax distribution than Indian Trail, even though Indian Trail is, is much bigger. So, and then finally, the, so expressed that they wanted to make some strategic investments in, in certain areas, including increasing the annual street maintenance funding. Increasing the economic development funding. Recently completed an economic development plan and development group for implementing edifying the town through enhanced landscaping and outsourcing maintenance. You can see here by the bypass, this is one of the areas that would presumably get enhanced landscaping. Town would be gaining more citizen feedback for a citizen survey. So we'd be able to get some statist, valid results. And then some investments that would go towards creating a downtown. So what is the effect on the five-year financial forecast? So I'm not going to go, go out over it in length. But I think the, the big takeaways are the current service levels begin to be covered narrowly by annual fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. Fairly narrow margins, there's very little room for error. And the debt interest comes from fund balance until twenty. Do want to mention as we go over this, this is, these are all projections, right? So we're forecasting, so we've tried to make some valid assumptions, but things can and probably will change in, in some way. But this is just another tool in the toolbox, right? Any, and finally, any new expenditures related to adding amenities, enhancing services? Or just kind of further pursuit towards priorities. These are funded by reserves or some other funding source. So, and you can see, you know, memorandum that I sent to council for a little bit more details. All the assumptions that the model is built on and all that good stuff. So that's a, a very quick overview. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, Alex, could you bring back up the numbers slide again, because I was going to ask you to bring up that memo of six-ten that you had, that same slide on there. And for, you know, for our audience that's, I think we've got a few people that are, that are on board, a few citizens there. But you know, the number I'd like to point out is, you know, last, this current fiscal year, we had revenues over expenditures of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And then next year, we're in the deficit of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand. So, you know, we're taking that money, that nine hundred and fifty-five thousand from our fund balance, which is basically our savings account for y'all that don't know the terminology. And I'm just concerned that, you know, that's not the way to run a business. And I've said it for years, when your operating expenses are so high, you don't have room for all the added projects that you'd want to, you know, that you want to do. It's just basic. So, you know, every year, I think that's what we need to do is look at our, our core operating expenses and see, make sure it's as low as possible so we can do these other projects and so, without having to go into fund balance. And so this year, that wasn't the case. So I just want to make sure the public is, is aware of that. So any other comments for Alex? All righty, I'll, any other, any citizens on the call that want to make any comments? This is a public hearing.
Mr. Sewell, can you be sure to unmute everyone, just in case someone does want to make a comment?
Absolutely. Let me see if I can.
Well, they can hit the chat button.
If, if you're not able, if you would like to speak and you're not able to unmute yourself, would you please?
Yeah, hit the chat button.
Type that in the chat button. I believe, my understanding though is that folks should be able to unmute themselves.
Yeah, I got the chat board opened up. There's nobody typing anything, so we'll give it a ten, fifteen more seconds. All right, not hearing any public comments, so any other further discussion from the council? Appreciate all y'all's work on it. Alex and your staff, appreciate y'all's, all y'all's work on this, so thank you very much. So I'll close the public hearing and then we'll schedule it for a vote on June twenty eighth. All righty, next up is the text amendment twenty-one dot oh four dot oh one, the tree disturbance permit. So Lynn, I'll turn it back over to you.
This was an amendment that we've brought to council on May the twenty-fourth and actually held the public hearing on. Tonight is the vote on this item. What's being proposed is that article seven point one dash one be amended to add language that would provide for, basically what it's doing is connecting the section of our ordinance that talks about permitting, it makes sure that everyone who goes to that section is aware of the fact that there is article eleven point ten that requires a tree disturbance permit. So we are requesting that that amendment be made. And as I said, the public hearing has been held and tonight is just the vote on this item. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address those.
Thank you Lynn.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Lynn and Mac, I don't know if you're still on the call, how do we, or what do we think that this House bill that regarding the, the tree ordinances that's in the Senate right now is going to have any impact on this? Do we think that we're wasting our time here with, if that gets passed or, I'm just curious as to staff's thoughts?
I don't know if Mac's still on the line. Are you still on there, Mac? I don't know if you can address that or you want me to?
He, he texted me that he was going to drop off.
Okay, um, it's my understanding, and I'm not a super, super familiar with all the ins and outs of that bill, but it's my understanding that that really prevents towns. There's a lot of language in there that talks about preventing towns from regulating the removal of trees on private property. In other words, we couldn't go on and regulate someone clearing trees in their backyard. Our ordinance already, we don't do that now. I think what this is addressing is the development community. Which is my understanding that, that that's what, that bill that's being passed, I don't know how much it addresses the development community as much as it's talking about removal of trees in towns regulating that on private or individual properties.
I agree with Ms. Hare on that. I know the Village of Marvin has an ordinance that if, you know, you had a tree on your property and you wanted to cut it down. If it's a certain size and it's not in emergency, they have to come out and look at it first before you can take it down. So I think it's trying to prevent cities and towns from having control over individual homeowners that want to remove trees on their own property.
Thank you. The, the language in the bill about private property, I, I just saw an argument there for developers saying it's it's their private property, so you can't tell us what to do.
I mean, there's a potential, there's a potential with that. With new legislation, we just don't know how it's going to be.
Okay, I, I'm definitely good with this ordinance passed through. I just kind of wanted your thoughts on that, on that movement. So, thank you.
All right, thank you Melanie. Lynn, any other comments, questions? All right, can I get a motion please?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the amendment to regulate the tree disturbance permit.
Second. Who was that?
John.
John, second by Mr. Martin to approve the text amendment twenty-one dot oh four dot oh one, tree disturbance permit. Motion made by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Martin. Alex, could you do a roll call please?
Yes, sir. District one, how do you vote?
Aye.
District two, how do you vote?
Aye.
District three, how do you vote?
Aye.
District four, how do you vote?
Aye.
District five, how do you vote?
Aye.
District six, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous for the approval of text amendment twenty-one dot oh four dot oh one. So thank y'all. Next up is the Ottawa Road widening options that we tabled from.
Mayor, if I may, I, I believe there is actually a statement of reasonableness and consistency to go along with that. I'll, I'll pull it up right now.
All right.
And if you could do a roll call vote for that as well, please.
Are you going to, somebody's going to have to read it or blow it up. I can't read that. There we go. Thank you Alex. Now scroll up a little bit, thank you. Okay, the request is a text amendment to development ordinance, article seven point one, permit and or approval required. The statement of consistency and reasonableness, the Stallings Town Council hereby finds that the proposed text amendments are consistent with the two thousand seventeen Stallings Comprehensive Land Use Plan adopted November twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, based on consistency with goals and objectives set forth in the document promoting orderly and consistent development. At their June seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Stallings Town Council voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendment and stated, should I read at their June fourteenth?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'll let you change it later. So at their June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Stallings Town Council voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendment and stated that town council finds and determines that the text amendments are consistent with the key guiding principles, goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and hereby recommends its approval. So can I get a motion on this, please?
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Martin to approve, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. Alex, could you do a roll call please?
Yes, sir. District one, how do you vote?
Aye.
District two, how do you vote?
Aye.
District three, how do you vote?
Aye.
District four, how do you vote?
Aye.
District five, how do you vote?
Aye.
And district six, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous to pass the statement of consistency and reasonableness. Thank y'all. All right, next up is the Ottawa Road widening options that we tabled from May twenty-fourth. And it says here, possible action, so, yeah. We've been talking about this for a while, so we'll see what happens.
Mayor, would you like me to kind of a brief overview where, where we are?
Yeah, go through that memo and then we'll.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we, we've talked about this so many times for, everybody, you know, I won't go every detail, but basically, long story short, N C D O T and the, the town of Stallings have been having an open dialogue slash debate about what the project on Ottawa Road in Stallings should look like. The, what N C D O T is proposing is is significantly more than what the, the town feels comfortable with. Both in the number of lanes and the, there are strict turn movements at the intersection of Stevens Mill and Ottawa Road. And we've gone back and forth with D O T over the course of, over three. We've looked and explored a whole number of options. And basically where we're at is that the we went over several options back last year and then the board asked myself and Mayor Pro Tim Paxton to engage with CARPO leadership and discuss the project and verify the available options before us. And we did that and verified the options that were presented to the staff. Said, yes, we agree with them. We believe you're viewing the issue correctly. And they suggested the idea of having some sort of alternative done similar to what the town of Matthews did. There's a CARPO grant that will reportedly be open that we could potentially pursue, it's competitive, be a twenty percent match. But on, in, on myself, the mayor and the mayor pro Tim met with the D O T head engineer Brett Knite, discussed to discuss Potter Plaza Plains and we also discussed this project as well. And during that meeting, it was it was mentioned how we had really kind of already done an alternative study when we engaged with the engineers from and and so the group kinda noted that. Mr. Knite indicated that NCDOT would be willing to administratively delay a project for a couple of years until it was determined what would happen, so. And that's kinda where we stand right now, honestly. So happy to kinda bring up the options that we had developed before. Or just to kinda sit back and and let the board discuss amongst itself.
Thank you, Alex. Alrighty, any any comments? I know we've talked about this a lot, but Linda, being the vice chair of CARPO and being in your district, what are your thoughts?
Well, as you say, we've talked about this for probably two years now and we are still at a standoff with NCDOT. They're still insisting on six lanes, eight lanes at the intersections and the town has made it very clear that we don't want that. We have done some alternative studies. We had engineers come from Raleigh and met with us. Gosh, I'm not sure. That must have been at least a year ago. And we looked at the pairs and that doesn't work. And then the other option they suggested to us did not work well either because impacts to the neighboring communities. When council made the decision to deny the development proposed there on Ottawa that we eliminated another option that we were considering that possibly with the developer building a four lane section from four eighty five down to Stevens Mill. Some of us at least were hopeful that that might get DOT to drop the six lane section, but now that that's not happening, I don't think they will. My own feeling is that probably we should allow DOT to do an administrative delay. Things do change. We have different we have changes with staff with DOT. We have changes with people in the legislature and with the board of transportation in Raleigh. So if we continue to object to what NCDOT wants to do there, then I think our only possibility is to delay and hope that dealing with different people will allow us to have what we want. Or we just accept that we're gonna have six lanes there, even though it's inconsistent with our plans on that corridor. I don't like any of these options and I know nobody else on council does either, but I don't know anything else we can do.
Well, I'll make, I'll go ahead and comment on it. I agree with that. I just seen that get your term administrative delay, I think if that's what they're calling it, just we just ask them to delay this project two, three years and see if things change. So that would be my suggestion. Comments from the rest of council?
Good curve.
I agree.
Yep, delay.
Alrighty, well, Stephen and Brad, we hope you all agree, cuz you know, since this, I've heard from the four council members that are in there, it's in their backyard, so. And that's a consensus. So thumbs up from Brad. Stephen, you okay with it? Or do you have another opinion?
Again, it impacts more the northern side, so I agree with the rest of the council on the northern side.
Yeah, I mean, I think if I had another solution, I would offer it. I don't have another one, so.
Yeah, I was talking to some elderly people when I was that live over in, I think it's called Davis Chase on the other side of four eighty five and and Mecklenburg County, when I was speaking at the graduation ceremony and they were asking me about the diamond design and how, you know, they would hope they would be illuminated so they can see it. They were elderly people, you know. I'm I'm elderly, but I'm not blind yet. So so there's a concern in the in the community about that too, so who knows what will happen. So, all right, well, Alex, can you pass that along to DOT?
Absolutely, Mayor. What I'll do is I'll write a letter indicating the council requesting an administrative delay of this project. Is there a is there a time period that we'd like to set? I heard two years or three years.
Three years.
Three years. Three years.
Two years, two years flies by.
And do we want to, I I brought it up in the screen the last kind of more substantive, technical. But do we wanna kind of maintain you know, what the position request was before? Cross section plus the left turn and just kinda reiterate what was in this letter?
Yes, every time we write a letter to them, let's let's say that and keep reminding them what we want. Because when things change, we want somebody to review this document, this letter.
So I'll I'll write the letting the DOT know that the wants to administratively delay this project for three years and that the is requesting that its position is still that they're requesting a four lane cross section plus a left turn lane with full Stevens Mill and Stallings right intersection and a full movement intersection at the Harris Teeter Shopping Center X intersection. And just kinda leave it at that. Does that sound?
Yeah, if you wanna send it out to council for final review before you send it on, since it's pretty important that, you know, anybody wants to make any last minute changes.
Yeah, I'll do that. And if there are any any issues, we can always just put it on the agenda to finalize the letter next time.
Right. All right, any other comments? All right, thank you, Alex, for keeping the notes on all this.
Yes, thank you.
Linda, thank you for your comments. All right, next up is number eight, the streetscape plan. I'll turn that over to Lynn.
Okay, apologies, I'm just looking for this on my screen share. All right, apologize for that.
No problem.
All right, we staffer here this evening to discuss with council and present to you all our proposed twenty twenty one streetscape plan for the town. The purpose of the this presentation is we're really looking to just introduce council to the plan, to the concept. Would like to share with you the plan components that staff has come up with with the outline, what our proposed timeline is for this plan. And then really most importantly, we would just like to gather feedback from council and make sure that we're going in the direction council would like us to on this project. Um, so why are we talking about streetscape? One of the elements is really, one thing we really have been talking a lot about in a lot of the projects we've been working on specifically with downtown is public realm. And the public realm is really the first thing that people see. That's often referred to as streetscape. Much of the town's image and identity depends on the character of our public realm. And it's important to coordinate individual elements so that we can have a unifying effect. And that will serve to help identify the town of Stallings. Another reason that we are doing this or proposing that we create a streetscape plan is that it's consistent with planning goals that we've already created. When we went through the comprehensive land use planning process in two thousand seventeen, we had a steering committee. We also held several, I believe, four open houses at Stallings Elementary. And an overriding theme that came out of that entire process was the lack of identity that the town of Stallings had. I think it was even brought up when Ms. Reed was talking about the historical markers and how they can help create an identity for the town. But that was something that was brought up consistently. It was such an important factor in that whole process that there's actually an entire chapter of our comp plan dedicated to it. And one of the goals that was established through that plan was to create a streetscape program that would help identify Stallings. It was thought that if we could identify our streets, get some streetscape that really would make us stand out. People would know that they were installing them when they drove through our town. The same thing was carried through in our small area plan report as well as the council priorities recently with the downtown streetscape plan, which staff intends to incorporate into this overall streetscape plan for the town. It was such an important goal that we actually included it, excuse me, as a balanced scorecard goal. We've been very busy with development agreements and other planning projects, so we haven't had time to get to it, but we are starting to focus on this project and making it a department priority now. So what will our plan look like? What are things that we're considering in this plan? We are going to include an introduction and an overview, which will include a lot of the things I just talked about, why streetscape. We're also gonna focus on existing conditions and do an inventory of the streets and intersections that we select to include. Will include things like right of way width, sidewalk inventories, how 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 many are there sidewalks on these streets? We'll also be looking at tree canopy, is there existing tree stands along some of these roads where we may want to consider leaving that and have some natural treescape in certain areas of town. And then vision and framework. What is our vision? What streets do we want to include? We really need to identify and narrow that down, what intersections? And then streets and intersections, what we would like to do in this chapter is create cross sections where we would show how these streets and intersections, how streetscape would be implemented there. And then in our design guide, we'd like to focus on things such as hardscape elements where we might would like to select a bench that we might want to use throughout the town. You know, light poles, banners, do we want to have hanging plants or hanging planters? We might even wanna get into landscape elements here, or we'd maybe pick a tree. It's something that we wanna use throughout the town that identifies Stallings and is unique to our town. We could even go so far as to create a color palette for landscaping as well. So those are all things that staff is considering and would like to include within the plan. And this is a map that was created to show you our main roadways and intersections. These are areas that we think would be a really good start to start thinking about applying streetscape to these areas. I think the intersections are gonna be very important and provide focal points, specifically areas like Old Monroe Road, I think Idlewild and Stevens Mill. These are very visible gateway areas into our town. Even though we have these entire roadways like Lawyer, Stevens Mill, Stallings Road, Potter, the entire road highlighted, but that doesn't necessarily mean we may want to apply that streetscape to that entire roadway. I think it'll be important as we get into this to start identifying what parts of these roads we want to apply streetscape to. A good example might be between Atrium Hospital and Town Hall on Stallings Road, maybe an area we want to focus that streetscape on. And this is something we'll really be looking for the council's feedback on. We will probably come back to with these areas, but we would also like to present this to the public and get their feedback on it as well. So an overview of our plan and our creation schedule. We began a staff working on this plan in April. We started looking at what the outline would be, what our timeline would be. And then tonight we are launching, we are presenting this to you as our elected officials and we're seeking feedback and direction from you. Next month, we would really like to roll out our promotion of the project. We would like to intend to hold an open house and invite residents in. We will probably be doing this at the new town hall, where we can get their feedback and find out what it is they would like to see in their town so that we can incorporate those elements into the overall plan. And then the creation will begin after that. We'll once creating the document, we will also be working on those cross sections and graphics. And then and finally, later this year, hopefully November, December, we will be presenting a draft plan to the planning board and council for input and final adoption. So the final product, what we anticipate our final product to look like, we're anticipating that this will be a digital web based plan. Similar to the format you're looking at right now, we would like it to be graphic heavy. We feel like with the streetscape plan, it really needs to be very visual. We want it to be digital so we can store it on our website so the public can easily access it. So anybody developing in our town can easily access this plan as well. So that is our goal and that's the direction that we're heading in. That's the end of our presentation. As I said, we're really here tonight. We really wanted to present this to you all. We wanted to let you know what we were working on. We are doing this in-house, so staff will be working on this plan. We may need a little outside help with the graphics, but we don't anticipate that being anything significant in terms of funding. But we really wanted to just make sure that we're heading in a direction the council would like to see and just get any feedback you may have on the plan.
Alrighty, Lynn, thank you very much. And you know, we've talked about streetscape other than downtown streetscape as well. And I know did a project on it with Lynn and and design and things like that, so you know, welcome any comments, but as we go about looking at this project, you know, always keep in mind how we're gonna pay for it. Yeah, that's a I know staff's doing a lot of in-house work, but the implementation will be the, you know, the the cost factor, so. So I'll open it up to comments. Any comments for Lynn or to the council?
Just one. The graphics that you're gonna be producing, are those gonna be on a particular tool, like a three D render or so that they can be easily updated as feedback comes back? Or is that gonna be static graphics?
We would hope to do it in a format that we could easily update those. We haven't really gotten that far into it yet and that's one of the things we really need to think through, Mr. Ayers. That's a great suggestion. I think being able to to make changes to those will be important. So we will keep that in mind as we make those choices moving forward. Right now we are looking at, you know, is there maybe some sort of software package we could buy to help us with those, create the creation of those cross sections? But thank you for that comment. That's that's an excellent point and we will keep that in mind.
And when it comes to implementation, I guess I talked to Alex about this here. I mean, and the mayor kinda touched on it. I mean, we're not talking about trivial money here. We're talking about a pretty significant chunk of change. So will the presentation that comes in November, December timeframe include implementation phases that tie an estimated dollar amount to it? Sort of like a, I hate to say a project plan, but I mean, sometimes when we look at these things and we say it's gonna cost ten million dollars, I mean, it's kind of I think that's gonna be a hard sell no matter how you go about it. And I mean, I I I think the only way that we could ever accomplish this if we move forward with it would be incremental and how the incremental pieces would would work. And then my other piece of it would be is that is the seventy five thousand dollars that we spent that's going to bring in the downtown phase one planning? It I mean, is there potential for, I mean, it seems like that process is gonna provide us with some data? And so does that data kind of feed into this streetscape plan? And I guess my question, my my thought is there is like, they may tell us that, well, you're thinking about streetscape plan now and maybe we don't need to think about streetscape plan until, you know, phase two or phase three. So I mean, is that gonna feed into this plan?
Um, those are all very good questions. First, I wanna say any plan that you create, you hope that there's an implementation that goes forward with that plan. I think what we're thinking in this situation is we want to have something written down in a plan so that as development occurs, hopefully we can get developers to pay for some of this as well. I know we don't have a lot of opportunity left for that in some areas of town because they're already developed out. But without the plan, we we can't get that to happen. If we have this plan in place, we can also use it for when DOT widens our roads to go to them and say, this is part of a plan that we've already created and we want this included in the widening. Now, that doesn't mean that they will pay for it all, but it will help us with getting it implemented and then putting in what we have already adopted in the plan. Plans also help us go out there and get grant money. So if there's any type of grant money for something like this in the future, that may be, but the plan, if we don't have a plan in place showing these grants organizations what we are intending to do, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to get those funds. So I don't think the intent is this of the plan is for us per se to say that the town is going to go out and implement this all at one time. But I think it's something that we will put in place similar to our Greenway Plan, where we will be phased, where we will have developers contributing to it, where over time this will start to be implemented. Now, the town hall streetscape plan, that is something we definitely can take elements from that and incorporate into this plan, and I think that we should. But I think that that streetscape plan that was designed for town hall is probably an area where you're going to see something a little more significant, just because it is in front of our town hall. There's ways of doing and adding to that character of an area where you may not have to add on-street parking, which is very expensive, and you may not have to do some of the other hardscape elements. So we will definitely keep cost in mind when we're doing this. I don't know that adding a financial element to this plan is something that we've considered right now. But we can definitely think through that and see if it's something that we're able to do. You know, in terms of implementation. But I do think this is just, is a plan we would like to have in place so that we can use it similar to our Greenway Plan as we start to move forward.
Okay, and you clarified something for me that I wasn't aware of. That this is different than, say, the street, streetscape that we've got planned for kind of downtown-ish area. Sounds like.
Yes, correct. That is correct.
Well, Steve, I may add that even in the downtown area, we're maybe scoping out what that may be in the future, but the plan development interest in phase one, phase two, or phase seven of whatever plan we do for the development interest to pay for that. And I would only comment, Lynn, that I think that's a good point the state brings up, and maybe setting expectations that this isn't a five-year plan. This feels more like a a placeholder for what does a town streetscape look like in these areas in 20 years? So setting expectations is important. So that we don't, and then how does it adapt over a 15, 20-year period? What are the things y'all be thinking about? Because we won't see this probably take place, much like your Greenway Plan for a generation. Am I, am I right about that?
You are correct, yes. And you know, in towns around us have these plans. I think Matthews is a good example. You know, they have a plan and they've started to implement this in very, it's very small, but it makes a difference. I think there's an area on, I think of the name of the road that goes behind the Harris Teeter distribution or the Harris Teeter sign. The street that, you know, the entrance of the hospital is off of, their back entrance. You know, there's just a very small streetscape on there where they put in a median and some stamped concrete is a crosswalk there. And just those little things start to make a difference. So yes, you know, I think that it will be a long-term plan, and it's something that won't happen overnight. But it's there, it's a tool in the toolbox. I know we use that term a lot, but it's something that we can use with developers, we can use when we're doing plan review. We can use during our budget process if it's something that council decides they want that that year, that's something they want to spend some money on, but you know, it's not something that we're, we're creating this plan and asking council to, to fund right away. We just want to have the plan in place so that we can look forward and anticipate what these streets and intersections will hopefully look like in the future.
All right, Lynn, thanks for that explanation. Any other comments, questions? Well, Brad, we all look to you for these type of things that you've done in the past, so what is your recommendation?
Yeah, I think as long as the cost is reasonable and we're doing it in-house, we've got time, it's valuable. I think Lynn highlighted the major points. You don't spend a lot of money on this, but, but have the plan available for future conversations and the talent has thought about this. So yeah, I'm good with it.
Well, I agree with you. So can I get a motion from, from you?
I'll, I'll make it if that was, yeah. Proceed.
That's simple enough. All right, can I get a second? Second by Ms. Groom, so Alex, could you do a roll call, please?
One, how do you vote?
Aye.
District two, how do you vote?
Aye.
District three, how do you vote?
Aye.
District four, how do you vote?
Aye.
District five, how do you vote?
Aye.
District six, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, as have it, so proceed, Matthew and Lynn, so appreciate y'all's work on this.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is Stallings Municipal Park Items from Ashley, so I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Everybody see me?
Gotcha.
Excellent. So just wanted to start the evening off. I've got a few things to discuss with you. But first I have a video presentation from Eunice, our Parks and Rec event coordinator. She can't be with us tonight. She's actually on a plane right now flying back from a much-needed vacation before we get into the heavy event season. But we're, we're going to lead off talking about how we are coming back from COVID. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview here of what things are looking like for us. And, you know, we operated all through COVID on a modified basis. Start this slideshow here for you. Can everybody see the slideshow?
Got it.
Excellent. All right, so we've, we've rephased our operations and, as you know, we did virtual programming all last year and ended in March of this year. In January, we reopened playgrounds, tennis courts, started our drop-in recreation. Our rentals began again in March, which is typical for the year. We launched our farmer's market in May, and our splash pad opened this weekend. I do have an update for you guys on that coming later. And then we have some summer programs coming up. Next thing we have coming up is a chalk the walk contest. We're going to have the community out to showcase their artistic skills. And then we have another search and find in the park. We've done a few of these. You guys have seen our leprechauns in the park and we did a pirate search. And this one's going to be a star search, 50 states, 50 stars, 50 fun facts for everyone to come out over the holiday weekend and do a self-led guided thing throughout Stallings Park. So we're, you know, we're gearing back up here, things are, are coming back online. And as we're coming back online, one of the opportunities that we've had is to really take a hard look at, you know, the, how the community has responded throughout the pandemic and how they want us to respond to them going forward in the future. Got a lot of feedback on the events we've done in the past. The industry has changed for us, you know, bounce houses, amusement rides, a lot of that regulated stuff either doesn't exist anymore, people have gone out of business, or it's given us a time to reflect and really think back on what community means and what we really want to see here in Stalling. So I'm going to turn it over to Eunice and just someone let me know if the video, if you can hear her and see her once we get started. And it should work because I tested it earlier. But here we go. It's about eight minutes, so I'm going to turn it over to her.
Hey, y'all, this is Eunice here. I hope you're having a great and happy Monday. This is probably the third or fourth or fifth or seventh time I've recorded this. I would much rather see y'all's lovely faces live, but unfortunately, I am probably sitting on a plane right now. Flying back to Charlotte from Wisconsin. Enjoyed a little bit of a long weekend, so I'm actually recording this June 9th, Wednesday. I fly out tomorrow, so by the time you see this, I'll be back. So I would have had a very happy vacation, I am sure. But I wanted to hop on here right quick, even though I'm missing, I know y'all are having a meeting tonight. Thank you so much for squeezing me into a little piece of it. But I just wanted to hop on and kind of tell you something that we have planned for the end of the year. I know COVID has been really hard on all of us, and it seems like everything is kind of taking a turn for the better, you know, somewhat back to normal. So this is just an idea that I've collaborated with a few people. I know I've talked to Ashley, our staff, Lyndon Ryan, and even Alex kind of sat in and we kind of worked something together that we think would be really awesome for the town. So hang in there with me. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Don't want to keep y'all on here too long, especially because this is a recording of me. And if you have any questions, you know, I'm just not really there to answer them right now, so let's just rock and roll with it. So first, who is talking? Me. There's my lovely face with my little puppy goose. I think I'm actually this way. But I'm Eunice McSwain. I'm the special events coordinator. I think y'all see my faces just a few times. But lucky, you guys, I'm right back at it. And what we're going to be going over today is Stallings Day. So this is something that is going to be focused for local community. Really want to highlight what we have going on, bringing that downtown aspect. And I thought a fun little tagline would be Live Place Day. Really focusing on this hometown that we really have in Stallings. So the focus for this event would be on three things. I really want to highlight the Stallings citizens, our local vendors, as well as our staff that we have here at the town, as well as you lovely council members. I think this is something that maybe we haven't highlighted on in the past that I think is the core focus of what Stallings Day should be. This is just a little bit of everything put into one. I know since we've been working with the farmer's market, we kind of have some good connections going with them. And I think we could really hop on some vendors from them to kind of help us out over here. And I know that our citizens have really loved the programming that we've been doing during COVID. And I think we already have this great following that we could add them on, as well as staff has just been dying, I'm sure, to do something to help everybody out. So I'd really love them to tie into this event as well. So with that being said, I know in the past, y'all have heard of something called Stallings Fest. I have never been here for one of those. And I know it's very elaborate, fireworks, carnival rides, you know, fun little games, stunt tapes I've even seen in the past. But this year, with COVID, with everything kind of picking back up from the beginning, I really wanted to focus on community, local, downsizing a little bit, starting fresh, something completely new, a little different than what we've done before. And that is kind of where the little child of Stallings Day came from. It would be Saturday, October 23rd of this year. And I kind of put in a little timeline for you guys. This is very rough, just the starting stretch. But essentially, the event would run from noon to 5:00 PM. It would consist of food trucks. It would have an artisan market. We'd have live music. We'd also have these things called activity tents. What I really want out of these is staff. Each department would have a different tent. They would host a game or some sort of craft for the community, as well as an educational aspect to let everybody know kind of how they play a piece of our little big puzzle for the town. As well as council, I'd love for you guys to come out, have your own little booth, maybe even share some things that you have approved along the way, how you guys make this community so special and how we're always growing and just adding new services for people that live in the town. And also, I really want to work with our park partners. So these are people that come in, use our park spaces, and really give back to the community as well. We have Fit for Moms, Camp Gladiator, Girls on the Run, Kinder Music, and also the Pirates of Waxaw always lend us a helping hand for the events that we have done within the past year. So I'd love for everybody to just come together. It's almost like a little backyard picnic. I think it's, will be so much fun. And also, of course, I've put in there some contracted booths that would be magicians, very science-related, educational. These dinosaur guys that come out and they are just awesome. You'll just have to wait and see. And then also maybe a bubble artist or two to just really kind of entertain the kids. Again, this is just a rough little sketch of what the day would look like. Obviously open for change, but I'm really shooting for that noon to 5:00 timeframe. And then next here, you can kind of see, this is just a map of where everything would be. Obviously, this is the park map, Stallings Municipal Park. You can see where I've highlighted the food trucks. They would go around the band shell. The band shell is where our live music will play. And then we have a cute little hexagon. That is the teal blue. That is where the artisan market would be. We would partner with Union County, bring in some artisan vendors from there. Also, and then the little green little triangle, that is where we'll put all the staff tents and obviously our council tent as well, kind of just have a big old family going. And this is where those educational booths will be, along with the craft or game for everyone. And also, you see those little back, little, I don't even know what they call, blobs. It looks like a little paint blob. It's either purple or dark blue. My color, I think I'm colorblind, but it's fine. But those would be the contracted booths that would be in the back, something fun. This would be something fun, family-friendly, open for everyone to all ages. I really want it to be something that somebody that is, you know, two years old could come out and have a good time, as well as someone that is, you know, 20, maybe even 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, all the ages. We really want this to be open to anyone that just lives in town. Really focus on that community aspect. And I know this is a little different than you guys have seen before, but that's kind of why I wanted to come on here and just kind of voice what I think would be really good for the town. Start something that would just be a total new direction. Instead of serving the greater community of Charlotte, maybe different counties that really come out. I really want this to focus on our hometown, creating that downtown aspect and just really getting as many people as we can involved that really have something to show for us and really make us stand out and why we're so special. So with that being said, I want to say thank you guys for listening to my little presentation. I feel like a little teacher, like with all my little students that are listening. But anyways, thank you. It's been fun. I wish I was there to kind of really see you guys live, to even see your faces. If y'all think this is a good idea, a bad idea, I'm really pitching it out there. Like I said, we're at the planning board, but we are getting closer and closer to that date. So I really wanted y'all's opinions, really throw this out there, pitch it to you guys. I think it would be awesome. If you have any comments or questions, please feel free to email me. I'll be back in the office on Wednesday. So if you email me before then and I'm not responding, that is why you'll be greeted by my out-of-office email, so stay tuned for that. If you want to see what that says, shoot me an email, say, hey, I don't know. It'll be awesome, whatever it is. Thank you, guys. I hope you have a great rest of your meeting, and I'll see y'all very soon. Bye.
All right, thanks, everybody. I just wanted to, you know, to reiterate what Eunice said. Coming out of COVID, it's been interesting for us as Parks and Rec professionals as everyone is coming back to their events. You know, we're all hit with the same thing. The vendors that we had there before are either no longer there or they're, you know, they're struggling to get back in. And we really want to play it safe and make sure we bring something nice to the community. Kind of take this almost not as a mulligan year, but as a rebuilding year, focus on community and then take that feedback we've got and do something really nice. And then, you know, build it back up for future years. So I'll take comments.
Actually, let's talk about, I've talked to council members and citizens about this. How do we make this just Stallings-only residence? Have you all thought about that?
I'm not sure there's a way for us to do that, but I'd love to hear your thoughts if you have one.
Oh.
Why?
Yeah, I don't understand why we make this only Stallings residents.
I don't get it.
What's your, what's your line of thinking there?
Who you asking, Ashley?
No, you suggested making it Stallings residents only, but I'm just
It was in the first column. Can we go back to your first?
Our intention wasn't to make it Stallings residents only. Our intention was, the last time we had this event, we actually had to spend almost almost quite a bit of money, sixty-five hundred dollars on shuttle services. Because it had become so popular that we didn't have enough parking. So we utilized CPCC and we had people, we did a poll and we had people coming from Cabarrus County, from Rock Hill, from Columbia, South Carolina, that were coming to the event. So our focus this year was not to exclude anyone that wasn't a resident, but what was to cut down on our external advertising and to focus more on the internal community in the local area.
Can you bring up, can you bring up that slide?
I sure can, give me just a minute, it's, it was a video, so I've got to go to a different.
No, it was your slide, it wasn't in the video.
Yeah, give me just a second.
Mayor, while we're waiting, Heather texted and she's lost power at her house, so she's off the meeting for the night.
Well. Was it a storm?
Mayor, I would just comment, I mean, the arguments that Ashley is presenting actually is counter to our goal of becoming a destination. I mean, if people are coming from Cabarrus County to Stallings, then that makes us a destination. So I'm a little concerned about trying to limit participation in these events. I know it's always been attractive to probably more people outside of Stallings than within, but I'd be really cautious about limiting participation.
So we weren't trying to limit the public's participation. We were trying to readjust our vendor participation. So when we're talking about who, who we have as our local vendors, instead of paying an amusement organization that comes from Kentucky or from lower South Carolina, we were looking to leverage what we have here in the local community, which will also reduce our budget. Stallings Fest in the past was about a forty to fifty thousand dollar investment. This year with the lack of lead time, it usually takes us a year to plan for that. It's June, we're looking at October. The concern is we don't have the, the time, you know, to invest into pulling off something that big. So we're looking at coming out of COVID, downsize it just for this year only. But we didn't want to confuse the public and undersell what is known as Stallings Fest. So we wanted to readjust, have a Stallings Day, bring it back to that local feel that was here before I was here, which was like Family Day in the park, do kind of a scaled down thing where we utilize the people who are already been in the parks this year, our workout groups, our, you know, Girls on the Run. And then that way, we can still have a great fall festival. And then we, you know, as soon as it's over, we kick back into gear and we have an amazing Stallings Fest, fireworks and everything again next year. And all we would do differently is we wouldn't advertise on the radio, we wouldn't use paid Facebook advertisements. That way, you know, there's not four of us trying to run a seventy-five hundred person event in October with only four months to plan. So that's what we're.
And I imagine the major cost was the vendors, the rides and things like that.
Yes, and, and one of my biggest concerns here about the amusement rides is, number one, those are not, I'm going to stop sharing my screen real quick. But those are not regulated by any safety aspect in the state. And with them being down for two seasons, I'm very concerned that whether they were inspected or not to begin with, they probably haven't been used a lot. And I don't want us to get in a situation where we get something that hasn't been used, hasn't been maintained, and it breaks and someone gets hurt. There's still also concerns about extra, the CDC guidelines and the North Carolina state guidelines still have a lot of extra, you know, wiping down surfaces in between people and what your capacities are to use. And I don't see those going away anytime soon. So I think the administrative controls we would have to put in place, similar to what they're using at like Carowinds and places, would just make it an uncomfortable environment for families. So what we thought was to eliminate that scenario entirely and, and do something different that would be enjoyable, so that we avoid that scenario entirely. So that's what we're presenting to you tonight. It's, it is smaller than what we've done in the past, but it will be our first big event coming out of a year and a half of having zero events. It'll give us a chance to staff with Eunice as a first time with us as a special events coordinator to get her feet under her, all of us, a chance to get our feet back under us, bringing an event back that we can really rocket, nail it a hundred percent and blow it out of the water for the community without the pressure of, you know, if one thing goes wrong, then, you know, we really kind of blew it.
Well, all right, Mayor, just. Thank you. I think I heard something totally different. So, so I think, let me just say, I found Eunice's exuberance to be a little bit distracting from maybe her message. Because and I do appreciate her energy and I don't take that the wrong way. But I think it led to us all hearing a different thing, because what I heard was, was a new, and I won't belabor this, there's this, this getting late, but a new event that's smaller, community-focused, almost like a town founder's day picnic kind of thing. That is not tourist related, that is not out of town centric. So, so, and again, I think Linda is exactly right. But from what she heard, it's counter to our goals. What I heard was something totally different that, that I liked a lot, but I just think it got missed in the message. So I'd like for y'all to go back and clarify what you're trying to do. And come back with, with a little bit tighter plan that, that didn't feel good at all. It didn't feel like it was, it didn't feel like it was a vision at all. So, so I think there's value in something, I just don't know that you accomplished it tonight. So let's do that again sometime, and I'm going to offer some thoughts on it too.
Sure, okay. Then in that case, I'm going to move on to talk about splash pad.
Yep, let's do.
All right, so let's recap here about our splash pad. I didn't want to start from the beginning, so excuse me. Everybody who hasn't been here for our splash pad in the past years, just to catch you up from the beginning, it was installed in two thousand twelve. It was actually built as a decorative fountain. And then low and behold, kids wanted to play in it. So we had to adhere with the North Carolina State Pool Code. From that time period, we had to chlorinate the water and we had to treat it like a splash pad. So splash pad is the industry term. What we have, though, is mechanically a decorative fountain. We do have it open after it being closed for two years. Two years ago, we put an extensive amount of money into it to replace the chemical filtration system. We also, the grates that you can kind of see in the background of this picture were cast iron that were obviously degrading due to the chlorine water that we were putting through the system. And then the surface there is, was granite and it was slippery once it got wet. So the town invested in sanding that down and making it safe for the kids. So as of this weekend, the splash pad opened. We plan to have it open ten A M. to six P M. We're closed one day a week for maintenance. Thursdays will be that day. Indian Trail is closed on Tuesday, so we didn't want to be closed the same day as them because obviously that just creates a vacuum in the community. And we don't want to be closed on the weekend because that's high volume time. So this season, there are a couple of maintenance requirements that we're going to have to do. Because as we were doing our preseason startup and went through our inspection process, our variable drive has failed, so we have to replace that. And then there's a check valve in the collection tank that the inspector failed. But we were still able to get our operation permit, but we do have to replace that. You also got a memo, we were proposing pass-through drainage system. The cost is extensive, but I'm going to explain why that, that cost is a great investment. So tonight, we're, staff is requesting council to authorize us to enter in a contract with W P Law Fountain Division for repairs in the amount of thirty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-five, and then to use them for routine maintenance as needed. So just for reference, a typical splash pad, like what is an Indian Trail is configured as such. The big black thing you see in the bottom right is the collection tank. Usually holds about two thousand gallons, one thousand, two thousand gallons of water. The round circular area you see is where the little spray pad is. And then they have a control box with some PVC piping. And to the right, you can see what that PVC piping looks like. They have a pump filter and an inline chlorinator. It's very simple, very easy, modern technology, well put together. This is what our control room looks like. The big black tank is a sand filter. We have an in-ground four thousand gallon tank. And what you see in the back is our feature pump. Our feature pump is a highly pressurized system that is actually very complicated. But it, it requires a lot of daily attentive care. So the next slide actually shows you here to the left, this is where our catch basin is in the feature pump that we have to strain out every day. I ran the splash pad the first day on Saturday and to the right is what it looked like after running for three hours. So we have twelve spheres, sixteen other splash pad apparatus up the top, and then four drains. You will get grass, yes.
Was that the first three hours of the season or is that a typical three hours?
That, that was the first three hours of Saturday for the first time running.
So what would, what would it look like a week later and you're running it and cleaning it daily? What do you usually get in the filter?
That's typically what it looks like every day. So that's why we're asking for the inline filtration. What the inline filtration would do would, would catch the water as it comes through the splash pad before it gets to the collection tank. It would install two of these baskets before it gets to the recirculation tank. And we would be able to, to pull those out of the ground easily and, and wash those off without having to change it out of this particular area to the left. This area to the left is, it's a hundred pound cast iron plate because it's a pressurized system. So every time we have to change that, you have to unscrew all four of those bolts. And we have a lever there that lifts that plate up. You pull the basket out, you wash it off, you put it back in, and then you have to tighten it back up. And so we do that every morning and we backwash the system. And that's what it looks like by the end of the day. And that's just because that area drains, you know, we've got grass fields around. It's, it's made to drain water. So anything that comes into that area, whether it's a bug or it's a balloon or it's a chewing gum from a kid, it's going to go down into that area. And this, this basket's doing its job, but as it gets clogged up, the chlorine can't get through there, you know, to do its job to make sure the water keeps enough chlorine. So then our chlorine feeder has to work harder throughout the day. So as this happens, eventually what happens is the debris builds up in the tank. So that's why we have the maintenance day once a week. Once a week, we drain the tank halfway so that it will drain out half, you know, any debris that's left in there. And then we refill it and then we re-chlorinate it. Eventually, what will happen is we'll get a pressure alarm on the system. And when that happens, we have to shut the entire thing down, we have to drain the entire underground tank. Our public works team goes down, they pressure wash the tank, we refill the tank, we re-put in the chemicals. And it's usually a two to two and a half day process, only because it takes so long for the chemicals to set into the water after it refills. So our downtime right now, obviously for first week of the season, we haven't had any downtime. And that's why we're trying to start with the one day a week downtime. Instead of previous seasons, the way it was managed was they decided to shut down the system every two hours, clean the filters, and then start it up again. But the problem with that is every time you change out this, this filter trap here, you have to re-pressurize the feature pump and that takes about twenty minutes. And when you have a hundred kids out there screaming at you, turn it on, turn it on. It's, you know, we don't want to ruin any kids' days. And it also is tougher on the system when you have to re-pressurize it. So we've been running it all day, ten to six, and then cleaning this once a day. But eventually it'll catch up to us.
The thirty-five thousand, does that include, you said it's maintenance as needed, or do we pay them?
No, 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 so the maintenance as needed would be, so this thirty-five thousand is the maintenance as needed. Everything else we handle in-house, we do all of the chemicals. We do all of the, the cleaning of the baskets, if a part breaks that we can replace. You know, if a bonding wire goes out, if, you know, it's something simple. All of our staff members, all of our public work staff members and myself and Ryan, our C P O and Eunice are C P O certified, so we can balance chemicals, we can maintain the daily functions. But if it becomes a plumbing issue, a mechanical issue, or an electrical issue, then we do have to go to a professional.
Right, and then how long's the installation on this?
It would be a two-day process and a third day for balancing the chemicals.
And then my last question is, how would we pay for this? Do we have something, a maintenance line item in the budget or a contingency fund? Alex or Ashley?
So we do budget ten thousand dollars each year for emergency splash pad funds. Obviously did not expend any in this current fiscal year. And then we, I do have a small, I think it's a five thousand dollar discretionary fund in the manager's line for Parks and Recreation. And then if the rest of it would come out of our buildings and grounds line item that we budget for any kind of funds that are needed to, to make repairs to the park.
All right, thank you, Ashley. Y'all, any questions for Ashley?
Ashley, I've got a safety concern with the fact you guys are opening a pressurized valve that often. Is it really designed?
When we open it.
Yeah, yeah, I get that, it's more of the stress on the metal. I'm not an engineer, but I, I've worked with plenty of pipes and stuff. And those aren't typically designed to be routinely open that much. You know, there's usually a set maintenance period, but you're stressing the metal and stressing that, that design.
This one here, you see that black wheel?
Yeah.
We have the variable drive, there's a feature pump off, but a switch, would you, let me go back one slide. On, on that control panel, there's the arrow, it's really hard to see, but it says feature pump. There, you turn that off, it depressurizes the system.
Yep, I get that, it's, it's more the valve itself and the cap to the valve. You know, if you guys are screwing and unscrewing that repeatedly, that's a lot of stress on.
And that's why we're proposing this inline, because the inline basket would be two strainers and it would, our contractors assure us it would, it would remove eighty percent of the debris and that we may only have to access that once a month. Right now, it's literally every day, which is, as you can see, it's, and it's very heavy.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just, call me a worry war, but I see catastrophic failure with that type of maintenance. I'm all for spinning it if we, if we need to keep the, the fountain going. But, you know, at the end of the day, the fountain wasn't really designed to do this. And, and we've, you know, modified it over the years. And we need to probably have a tough discussion the end of summer as to, you know, if it's something we, we want to continue as a town, because that's a lot.
All right, thank you, any other comments, questions?
Got one. Who does Indian Trail use for their, their fountain maintenance?
Well, Indian Trail doesn't have a fountain, they have a splash pad. But they do all their routine maintenance in-house. Right now, they don't have a contractor for emergency maintenance. If they have an emergency, which they did this past weekend, they have to rely on making an emergency call to a pool contractor. And this last time, they broke a pump handle and they had to wait three days to find somebody who would, who could come out and do an emergency call for them. Because they were unable to find a contractor for the season.
Can we partner up with Indian Trail and hire this company out of Rock Hill that you're talking about? And maybe get a better, better price for bringing both on board?
We could certainly discuss it, absolutely. I mean, we're not talking about bringing a company on to do routine maintenance.
No, it's your non-routine maintenance.
Correct, yeah, we can definitely discuss it. I think Indian Trail brings somebody in to balance. Correct. Yeah, we can definitely discuss it. I think Indian Trail brings somebody in to balance their chemicals weekly is what they use theirs for. Uh, we do that ourselves.
Alright, any other questions? Comments? Well, I certainly supported it as well. So can I get a motion, please? One way or the other?
Looking for the language here.
Alright.
Yeah. I would, uh, make the motion that we, uh, that we support and pass the, uh, the proposed install pass-through drainage system for an amount of, uh, roughly thirty-six thousand dollars.
Alright, motion by Mr. Martin, can I get a second? Can I get a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Paxton, is that correct? Was that you, Linda?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to authorize, uh, staff to, uh, purchase the pass-through, install, pass-through drainage system for thirty-six thousand dollars. Uh, Alex, could you do a roll call, please?
Can I ask a question before we do that?
Yeah, David.
Uh, I'm still concerned about the funding for this, so please run through how we're going to pay for this again. Anybody?
Ashley, could you hear that? You want, David would like to know how we're planning on playing for it again?
Yes, sir. We, uh, we have in the budget, uh, line item for, uh, emergency splash pad, uh, which is ten thousand dollars. We also have a yearly splash pad allocation of ten thousand dollars, so that's twenty thousand dollars. The remainder would come from our building and grounds, uh, budget allocation.
There's enough there to cover this, sixteen more.
There is.
How much will that leave the buildings and grounds left with? Is all of it or just?
That is not all of it. Um, so we, there, there are many projects that we actually did in-house during, during COVID this past year that we won't have to redo because we didn't have the wear and tear on the buildings.
Okay. I guess, I guess that my main concern is we don't want to raise taxes. We don't want to, uh, spend the money we don't have, so.
It's going to be tight for us. It'll use my five thousand dollar manager, um, discretionary fund. It'll be tight for us, but we'll make it work.
Okay.
We'll buy the, we will buy the five dollar chalk instead of the ten dollar chalk. I promise you, we'll make it work.
I hope we already are.
We are.
The building, yeah, the building and grounds budget is twenty-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
This year.
Thank you. Could I just get a very, and I mean, sort of very brief explanation of what happens if we do not do this?
Okay, if we do not do this, I actually wrote this down, um, and that's a very valid question. Um, so if we don't do this particular thing, um, what you're looking at is, as, uh, as the, uh, debris builds up in the tank, we will get a pressure, uh, failure in the feature pump and it will automatically shut down. So as it automatically shuts down, we have two choices. Either we leave it off, uh, or we drain the tank. Um, staff goes down, pressure washes the tank, cleans out all the valves, we refill the tank, um, and then we reload the chemicals and then we re-pressurize the system and bring it back online. So that's a two to three day process each time that happens. I can't tell you how frequently that's going to happen. I, I, I don't know. It depends on beta load. It depends on how often it rains. It depends on if somebody pours bubbles in the splash pad, which does happen. Um, so it, it just, it kind of depends. Um, so it's inevitable because it has happened to us every year I've been here. Um, it could happen every week, it could happen once a month, it could happen only once during the season. Um, so that, that is a, a very valid question. Uh, what we're talking about are engineering controls. Um, so you know, our plan right now is still every day to keep it functioning every day. We have to open that, um, that basket up, we have to clean it out, um, or it will turn back on the next day. So we can im- implement that plan where we open it up within the basket out, we backwash it and we re-pressurize the system and turn it back on, uh, and that'll keep us running. And then once a week, we have drained the tank. Uh, that's our current plan. And then I can track how long it takes to get to critical failure and come back with you guys and let you know how often that's happening, if that's what you would prefer. I mean, we are at June now and our season has to end by September thirtieth. So if that's, you know, if that's what you would prefer, that's also an option.
I see two numbers on this slide.
I know, one of them's incorrect. The correct number is thirty-four, eight, four, five.
Alrighty, any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve it up to thirty-six thousand dollars. So Alex, could you do a roll call, please? So you're, you're muted?
My apologies. District one, how do you vote?
Aye.
District two, how do you vote?
Aye.
District three, how do you vote?
Aye.
District four, how do you vote?
Oh, Heather, Heather is, Heather's a yes.
Thank you. District five, how do you?
Heather can't vote. She's not here.
It's, just pretend like she's not here.
Oh, I thought it counted as a yes.
Not if she can't hear, um, and participate in the conversation, know what's going on. In a, in a live meeting, if you move without being, if you leave without being excused, yes, but not in a virtual meeting.
Okay.
District five, how do you vote?
Yes.
District six, how do you vote?
You're muted, Linda.
Yes, that's Brad.
We're both Brad.
No.
Alright, alright, so that's one, two, three, four to one, the ayes have it. So, uh, the, uh, the motion to purchase the install pass-through drainage system passes. So, uh, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Alright, and, uh, real quick, signage and BMP, you know?
Yes, I'll give you the two minutes on each. It's just a recap of what we had in our budget discussion. Just want to make sure that I've got your feedback. Um, so I'm heading on the right page, um, to bring you some more information in the next couple of weeks. Um, for signage, we discussed, um, Stallings Park and Blair Mill Park. Uh, for Stallings Park, we're preparing information for an entry sign, um, revamping our rules signage, um, signs for each playground that address the age ranges. Um, uh, new, uh, fencing signage for all the, uh, entries, both from the neighborhoods and the, the pass-through walkways for pedestrians. Um, and then some enhanced, uh, signage for the farmer's market. And for Blair Mill Park, we discussed, um, signage for the Fair Haven, um, side. Um, one on the north side entrance and, uh, the signage that will be coming from the greenway as well as developing signage throughout the, the disc golf course. Is that correct? Did I get everything? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
And then Blair Mill Landscaping, um, I've reached out to, uh, the Monroe Parks and Recreation Department. I got three solid contacts on from them, set up some appointments, them to come out and look at what we've got, um, just to give me some advice, um, to get things started. And then we're working up a scope of work, uh, for that outsourcing to also include the other areas, um, to do, um, a proposal to send out for bids. Um, we're going to maintain our current levels there. Um, get some input from, excuse me, for chemicals that we can do in the meantime so that we're going ahead and making some of those enhancements. Um, there are some things that we would like to do that we can't because of it's so hot in the season and we, we don't have active water supply to those areas. Um, but I wanted to let you know that we, we have started the ball rolling on those items. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Alrighty, well, actually, thank you for all this information, all the work, appreciate it. Alrighty, well, that, uh, brings us to the end of our meeting then. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Motion by Mr. Martin and was that David?
Yep.
David Scholl, and so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank y'all for, as have it, so we're adjourned. So thank y'all for your work tonight.
Not on.
Thanks, bye.